My lord, I'm going to then deal with the facts, if I may.
Yes, sir.
There's a chronology from the appellant, at tab three of the core bundle, and I just draw it to your lordship's attention because it's not, it is the appellant's chronology, not the breach chronology. And I'm going to endeavour to fill in some of the gaps. Your lordship has the copy of Skeleton Argument, where I've given quite a few references to the documents, but I'm just going to try and highlight some of them, I may not go to all of them. You have a note there under the factual background. You'll see from even the appellant's chronology, the identification of the erection of one permanent marquee and one marquee for occasional use in 2006. And if one turns to the supplementary bundle, you will see, my lord, that if I could start at tab one, that there are applications, planning applications, that were made for three marquees on the 14th of July 2006. In fact, two of those marquees had already been erected. And the point, the relevant point about that, when it comes to the question of discretion, is that at least two of these marquees were for a time what is known as unlawful development. Your lordship has in my legal section the principles that my lord, Lord Justice Limbong, will be very familiar with, and maybe the rest of the court, but section fifty-seven of the Act requires planning permission for any development. And if you don't have planning permission, it's unlawful. It doesn't become a criminal offence until such time as enforcement action is taken, but it's unlawful nonetheless. And when it comes to the question of discretion, the fact is, the appellant was enjoying the fruits, very profitable fruits, from these marquees, which were unlawful. And my lord, what's not an issue is that this is an area of green belt, a grade-two star listed building, curtilage, and a grade-two star registered park and garden.
Green belt?
Green belt. Registered, oh sorry, grade-two star listed building, curtilage, and separately a grade-two star registered park and garden. Your lordship may be aware, you can have both the building listed, but you may also have registered parks and gardens, which are sufficient heritage interests.
Which green belt, sorry for interruption, which green belt is this? I couldn't find it in the papers, I did look.
Can I pass that along the line to Mr Evans, I'm part of the local planning authority. Yeah, well, and I'll pick up those references, and the reason I've flagged that up, your lordship, just to be clear, I'll pick up those references in the committee reports. But my learned friend takes a criticism, makes a criticism of the judge to suggest the judge introduced his view of the planning merits of these pieces of development. That is not a fair representation. It's common ground from all the committee reports that the local planning authority regard what this development constitutes as inappropriate development in the green belt, for which very special circumstances had to be demonstrated. They were not, save for eventually the use of them for a short period, five years, to pay for the restoration works to the gardens. But no, it's never been in dispute that these marquees should not be where they are. The only thing the planning authority has said is, we will allow them for five years, so the money that they generate could exceptionally be used to pay for the parks and gardens. It is therefore a totally artificial criticism to suggest the judge was introducing his view of the planning merits. He's reflecting what I will show you to be indisputable as the view of the planning authority throughout the history, and indeed, perhaps an independent inspector on the enforcement notice. Well, the, um, those planning applications were retrospective for at least two of the marquees, as I explained. And at tab two, you have the committee reports that I referred you to. And I don't want to go through them, but you will note that the proposals are subject to strong objections. See at the bottom of the page, because they're recorded. And the director's appraisal of each of the applications appears on the following page. And in that, you will find the very point I've just made, the identification in various different shapes and forms of why this development was unacceptable development in this location. My lord, without complicating it, there are shades and degrees to that because, for example, in the wall garden, there was less visual impact, et cetera. But in broad principle, each of these reports recommended refusal for at least green belt reasons, that they were inappropriate development, absent very special circumstances. And you can see the recommendations refusal at each, bottom of each one of those reports. That's the planning authority's view. Those, it appears, reports didn't actually make their way to a committee because the applications were withdrawn before the meeting on the 8th of March 2007. And your court may well know that developers sometimes choose to withdraw applications where they see the officer's recommended refusal, rather than gain a formal refusal. And at tab three, the next stage was issue of enforcement action by the local planning authority. Again, the notion that the judge has introduced some planning view of these marquees simply doesn't withstand scrutiny. The council was prepared to take enforcement action against them. That notice is dated the 11th of July 2007, and it was appealed. And the next document is the inspector's appeal decision. I think it came out on the 24th of November 2008. It's slightly obscured on the top right-hand side of the page. But for my lord, particularly my lord justice Limbong's question about the planning inspector's view, if one looks at paragraphs nine to fifteen on page 22, you can see what had happened. The withdrawn applications to the marquees had been taken away. In the meantime, some new applications have been submitted. And the question of what was actually on site had obviously fluctuated. At the time the inspector dealt with her decision, there was only one marquee, the lake marquee was still present. And you can get that from decision letter, paragraph twenty-six and twenty-seven, on page 24. And the inspector dismissed, subject to variation of the notice, the appeal against the enforcement notice. And you can see she did so on planning grounds, page 26, 27, 28, for reject the case being made, including a case that it was enabling development, namely, development that would assist in the restoration of the heritage assets. I'm taking that at speed, but I'm just giving you the outline. So you not only have a planning authority that considered the least, the marquees, all of them should be dismissed, but here is an inspector endorsing the lakeside marquee properly being the subject of enforcement action. And then, following that, in the next tab, you'll see the notices of refusal of planning permission on the 6th of July 2009. For those applications that the inspector had identified were outstanding, the planning authority issued three notices of refusal, again, for the three marquees. And again, without wearing your lordships too much, the clear planning reasons as to why the developments are unacceptable are set out in each of the notices. Common to all of them is its inappropriate development in the green belt. A further enforcement notice followed, page 34, in relation to what presumably was the only marquee up at that time, the 14th of April 2010 enforcement notice against the lakeside marquee. So that's the background to this development. Can I immediately contrast it, if you'll permit me, with the sorts of cases my learned friends have taken you to, where a developer applies for planning permission for development which hasn't taken place, and is seeking consent in order to proceed, and notification procedures occur. And the reason, one of the underlying principles of certainty is that the developer, once they receive the planning permission, is likely to commence the development by constructing whatever it may be, large houses or, and expending considerable sums of money in proceeding with the development. That's the basic principle that underlines the need for celerity or apt every possible celerity in a challenge and a notice period. But it has less force in circumstances where one has already commenced unlawful development and is seeking retrospectively to obtain consent for it. I say less force, I'm not suggesting the same principle is inapplicable, but it's a relevant fact. What then happens, of course, where my learned friend picked up the story, was the submission of an application, yet a further application, for the three marquees, and you find that at page 37. That was the application made on the 9th of April 2010. The court doesn't have the, all the accompanying documents, but it was again submitted with a case for enabling development, namely, we will use the money to pay for restoration of the historic parks and gardens, amongst other things. At least, my learned friend accepts at least one of the marquees was already there, the lakeside, it still hadn't been removed. Of course, it again, it prompted objections, not least from my clients, and there's an objection letter on page 43. I don't need to take your lordship through it, but there was objection, detailed objection, to the case for enabling development, querying the profits that were going to be made, which seemed to be far greater than the plan for putting the money back into the site. And the point, my lord, the principle here is where a planning application is made, it's notified to the public. It's, the development management procedural order explains how that's to be done. It may be by site notice, it may be by letter, it will be by advertisement in the local press. The principle in Gerber is that persons in the area are expected to respond to that notification, and it's misfortunate if they don't notice those procedures being followed, but there's a fair expectation, or it's a matter of principle, that it's fair to assume you would get notice from that procedure, and then, if you mind about the development, you take part by making your representations. No criticism can be made of the claimant or the interest party in this case, because that's precisely, sorry, first responder I should say, in this case, because that's precisely what they did. They took part in the process, made their representations. That led to a planning committee report of the 21st of July 2010, on page 51. The officers recommended in that report refusal of the application because the case for enabling development was not made out, not sufficient detail. But could I just ask your lordship to note about that? Page 53, halfway through, in the introduction, after the proposal constitutes inappropriate development in the green belt, the major application, you see introduction heading, and then halfway through, permission for the marquees is being sought by the applicant for a period of 25 years. My learned friend made a submission, it was a permanent permission. Well, that's certainly not what's recorded in documents before the court, and certainly not what's in the committee report, and it's never been corrected. The applicants never, sorry, the appellant's never written a letter saying we were seeking a permanent permission. They were permanent structures, which is why they attracted the need for paying permission, because they're very large marquees. But it was for a 25-year period. And my lord, that's when I point out that when you got an unconditional permission, you were getting something that not even you had asked for. And you also see in that reference, the identification of the lakeside marquee had already been erected. There apparently had been an appeal against the enforcement notice, which another hearing had been scheduled. And my lord, at the page 55, you can see the conclusion of the officer in July, identified visual impact, the proposal result in three large structures in green belt for a period of up to 25 years. It's considered view of the local planning authority, the proposals are not accompanied by sufficient very special circumstances, which would justify approval and outweigh the harm to the green belt. And that's supported by the director of finance assessment of their financial arguments. Lack of sufficient detail, recommendation for refusal. In the event, your lordships will see that it went back, it wasn't determined at that meeting, it went back on the 7th of September, page 56. And page 58, you'll see director's comments, the application was deferred for a committee site visit and to consider further information, it's page 58, about halfway down, relating to the financial case put forward. So further, page 58, my lord, director's.
So what we were looking at before was a recommendation for refusal by the officer for a planning committee meeting on the 21st of July.
Exactly. They had their meeting.
So what, why, what is this next one?
If, they had their meeting, and you can see that what actually happened is that the application was what's known as deferred, and it was deferred to allow site visit by the committee and to receive further information about the financial case. And you can see that from what is reported back to the committee on the 7th of September 2010. The director explains that on page 58. Well, that's about halfway, well, about a third of the way down by the first hole punch, director's comments, the application was deferred. And again, it's still identified as a permission for up to 25 years. But in the course of the analysis, there's consideration of the financial information. I don't read it all out, but the upshot of it is the officers recommend a temporary permission for five years only for money to be spent on the gardens. They did not accept that it would necessarily take 25 years for those works.
Where is that?
My lord, you can see, it's sort of a lengthy analysis, but it occurs through 59 to 60, and sort of last big paragraph on page 60, above appearance in the means of issues. The applicant submitted a restoration cost report. Costs approximately 1.9 million for the restoration works. Income generated from one, in the Hillbach Hotel was a comparator. They said you could generate that from one marquee for a period of five years. And so based on that, they didn't consider it was necessary to grant permission for 25 years, they said five years to see what would happen. Does your lordship have that in mind?
What is this reference here in that same paragraph to the likelihood that the hotel consent had been fully implemented, being reassessed?
My lord, in the background, there was an existing permission for a spa and hotel in the main building, which Historic England, or English Heritage it then was, had said should be relinquished because it was potentially a profitable consent for the use of the main listed building. But the appellant was refusing to relinquish it, but instead saying we need the marquees to generate money. Because the possibility was, money could have actually come from the use of the hotel building. And there was concern that you might get money being generated from both if the hotel consent were implemented. That's the.
So there was, there was hotel consent already?
For the use of the main building? In contradistinction to the market, it's quite a complicated one.
Consent for use of the main building as a hotel.
And spa.
But it is as a hotel, but they didn't want to implement that.
Correct.
I don't know if I speak for others, but what I would find really helpful, we lack it I think, is a map that shows the layout with all of these buildings on one thing.
What am I doing? Against the possibility of that question. Yes, my lord, we're handing in, disagree? A drawing that formed part of the relevant planning application. That's a drawing in the bottom right-hand corner, 1699. My recollection is from looking at the website, is that all the annotations in the body of the plan are on the original document. The, someone in my team has put notes on the left-hand side, which are additional to the submitted document, simply giving either the same or further information.
So, the, the blue land is the lake and canal cut. What is the boundary of the historic garden that's registered?
Certainly not shown on that plan.
Which building is the hotel?
Building in black, my lord. The manor denoted black in the manuscript notes.
Thornton Manor. Is it all of those buildings?
My lord, I'm instructed that it is essentially all the lands that have notations and marks on them, as it were, are within the registered park, which goes, I hope my lord's can see. That's to say, this land, which is not noted, sort of west, I understand, is not part of the statutory park, the registered park. So in other words, all the marquees and associated land are within the registered park, I believe.
Thornton Hall Hotel.
It's not on this map.
No. But at what distance is it from this?
Mile and a half.
In which direction?
North, south, east. South, south.
Well, this map might be the wrong way around, because, so, because if you look at the bottom left-hand corner, you see East Lodge. So if the map had north at the top, that would be the other side of the image. I don't know if that matters at all, but.
I would find out if it's facing north, it doesn't have a north pointer on it. I would, there is, there was a very poor copy of the site context at the beginning of the committee report, but you can't really make out much from that. That does appear to, if your lordship were to turn this plan 90 degrees, it would record with the plan at the front of the committee report on page 56. That would indeed put East Lodge to the east.
So Thornton Hall Hotels, Thornton Park, is that right? Sorry.
It's actually off that plan, I'm afraid, my lord, this, it's told us about, yeah. My lord, then, your lordship asked me about the hotel consent. There's a more detailed explanation of it, which I won't read out, but it's 50, page 59 of the committee report. The position of Historic English Heritage concern about that is explained in the paragraphs from halfway down onwards. And the thing that shifted was a belief that that consent wasn't necessarily viable to implement.
So the position was, the English Heritage generally supported the provision of the marquees as a device for funding the restoration of the gardens. They no longer take the structures that were intrusive.
Correct.
Then this was written conditional on provocation, I see the extent of the concern. League, but the English Heritage now applies this.
You'll see in the last paragraph, the applicant's now submitted additional confidential information, which indicates the manor is not operating at sufficient profit. One of the problems faced by the claimant, first respondent, is that it is not given the information that is said to support the case.
Yes.
And over the page, there's a discussion of why 25 years is considered by too long. The potential for a greater number of events, greater level of income. And then the comparator that I took your lordships to, of another hotel marquee.
The impression, correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't think this is the way you're putting the case, but just looking at this, what's said about English Heritage, which is, the terms of the proposed planning permission in due course, which talks about a review. And the review is tied to whether or not the financial returns are really sufficient to justify your son. So the impression that I've got at the moment, please do correct if I'm wrong, is that English Heritage have generally changed their position. They're so concerned about the state of these gardens that they've, they've, they've changed their view about the structures being overly intrusive. And basically, what they want is they're happy for, they are content for these structures to remain if and so long as the income from them is tied and sufficient to restore the gardens.
My lord, that's, that's, that's correct. That is, that's what's known as enabling development. Otherwise unacceptable development, which wouldn't get planning permission, is allowed, either permanently or for a short period, depending on what it is, in order to finance what's known as the conservation deficit in the parlance.
But, 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 I may just carry on for a moment. But that indicates, and I think will support the position, that if there was a sufficient case made out at the end of the five years for continued financial support for restoration or maintenance of the gardens, then it wouldn't be, at least. then it wouldn't be, at least at this stage, counted out of the range of possibilities that the planning permission could be extended.
Oh, that's, I, that's correct. We haven't suggested the contrary. And the judge, in fairness, as I'll show you, wasn't suggesting to the contrary.
No, but there is certain language of the judge about the nature, quite emphatic language, about the nature of the intrusion of the green belt and that these shouldn't be there at all.
My lord, that's, that's correct. They shouldn't be there, but they would or were being tolerated provided that the income was generated and a demonstrated scheduled programme of works to repair the gardens was entered into, hence the section one oh six, the importance of the section one oh six mechanism. But that doesn't detract from the principle that the marquises, in planning terms, shouldn't be there. They're an exception to generate sufficient income. The five year permission had a condition, or should have had a condition, which meant that absent a further extension, which would have to be sought and justified by reference to financial information as to what had occurred, that development became unlawful the day that that permission expired.
You say should have had a condition. Are you saying that was, or would have been the effect of condition one?
Indeed.
So the effect this...
Condition one...
Where we're getting eventually, coming to it, but condition one, conscious submission, say, made by the other side, condition one doesn't positively require you to remove the marquise.
No.
But its effect is that after the five years have gone by, the marquise are not lawfully on the site and are vulnerable to enforcement action.
Absolutely, my lord. And to put, can I, I might as well skip ahead to put that in context. Because, sorry, my lord, none of this was controversial. This point about condition one and this interpretation wasn't run below. There's no evidence, you'll see, you've got the skeleton arguments, it's not recorded in the judgment. And the reason one can see is that it's certainly so far as the local planning authority was concerned, if you turn, just skip forward to the chronology to page one hundred and ten. This was a letter from the local planning authority sent one hundred and ten, my lord, it's a letter dated the fifteenth of March two thousand and seventeen. Unauthorized marquises. I refer to the marquise sighted within the grounds of Thornton Manor. Planning permission was granted under eleven November, so that was the belief at the time, I'll come back to that.
But is it the, I'm just trying to understand, is it the presence of the... It's not the presence of the marquise that was then unauthorized, it was their use?
No, it's both, my lord. It's the presence. They are allowed to be there for five years only. If they are there after the five years has elapsed, they are unlawful development. There is no longer any planning permission for them to be there and they constitute...
They constitute what we call operational development.
Precisely, my lord.
And as operational development, they did not have the benefit of any planning permission. Assuming that the condition had been imposed after five years. They were therefore, they were operational development without planning permission and thus unlawful at that point.
My lord, that, you won't be surprised to agree with that, but that's clearly right as a matter of law. And therefore what...
Why were they operational rather than structures?
They were, they are structures, but because of their nature, and this is actually covered in the inspector's appeal decision, because they're of a certain size and affixed to the ground in a certain way, they are deemed to constitute operational development, more akin to a building, because they have the attributes of permanence, which for example a temporary marquee that you might put up in your own garden wouldn't. There's a planning judgment to be made about when you move into one to the other, like polytunnels, for example. But in this case, the inspector on the enforcement notice had dealt at that point. Everyone was agreed, these marquises were in the permanent structure type category, not the temporary type development, which wouldn't require planning permission. They were sufficient sized.
Can I just see what would have, I just want to, my, my clarify, what would happen? If the appropriate planning permission should have been granted, was granted, then presumably at some stage before it expired, if they wanted to do so to continue the use of the marquise, before it expired, the here the interested party, the appellant, would have applied for a new planning permission or extension of this one.
They could do, they could do, either make a new application, or they could make an application under section seventy-three of the nineteen ninety act, which allows you to get a new permission with bearing a condition. And as condition one should have been imposed, one could have asked for a new condition, say for another year or two years or longer. And you'd have to justify that application on its own merits. Or you could make a new planning application, there are two different ways of doing the same thing. But my lord, I was just showing you what actually happened on the assumption that a condition had been imposed, because that was the council's understanding at the time. And I'll show you why they had that understanding. At page one hundred and ten, on the fifteenth of March, at the end of the five year period, a planning officer went to look at the position. Found the marquise was still on site, there hadn't been any application to extend them. They were unauthorized and he required them to be removed. And failing which enforcement action would be taken. So my lord, I accept that you can have conditions requiring removal, but there's no requirement to have such a condition. And indeed, I certainly don't accept it's commonplace to have them.
But the logic of what was proposed was, let's see what happens over the next five years. Clearly, if you require them to be removed, then presumably the manor would have said that's nonsensical because we may need to go on for another five years, we may need, so we mustn't prejudge that. So the sensible thing was to build in the time condition, see whether so much money was generated, they didn't need more time. Not enough money was generated, so it wasn't worthwhile. Look at it again.
My lord, exactly. So there's perfect sense in having a condition which didn't require removal because it was anticipating the potential for a change in application, nothing unusual about that. As it happens, no monies were paid under the section one oh six arrangements that they had entered into. I'll show you that in the July two thousand and seventeen report. Or at least none of the obligations that they had entered into were complied with. And that comes to the point about clean hands if you're seeking the exercise of discretion. But I'm jumping forward, can I take your lordships back to the committee report? The terms of the committee report on page sixty-one are clear. It was intended to be a five year permission only. And the reasons are very clear, page sixty-one. But one should not ignore the fact, my lord, that condition one was dealing with the five year consent. Conditions two to ten were dealing with important other planning controls. The dell needed a noise barrier because of the impact on residents. The lake marquee needed a noise barrier. The dell needed a noise limiter. The lake needed a noise limiter. There needed to be signage to the marquise because you have lots of people travelling in the area. You needed internal road widening, condition seven. You need parking areas laid out properly. You needed no external lighting because you were protecting the wildlife, bats, et cetera, those things which are adversely affected, and no fireworks in nesting seasons because of the adverse effects. All of these conditions were part of the only authority that was given to the officers to issue permission. All of them have been omitted in the document. When you come to the minutes of the meeting, page sixty-three, these aren't the full version, there's a full version in the original claim bundle, but you can see on page sixty-four that the petitioner addressed the meeting, I think, I'm not sure if that was us or someone else, but we were certainly present. And a representative of the applicant addressed the meeting, it's halfway down the page on page sixty-four. And there was a resolution seven to five, so it was a close thing, but to resolve it subject to the conditions, all of those conditions. This isn't actually, it goes dot, dot, dot at the very bottom, but it's not controversial that it was all the conditions mentioned. So my lords, there can be no doubt that the appellant knew that the only authority being granted by the planning commission to the officers under their scheme of delegation was to issue a permission with those conditions on it, subject to the negotiation of the section one oh six agreement. So the officers had the power to negotiate the section one oh six. They did not have any power or authority to issue a permission which excluded any of these conditions. Just pausing there for a moment, the first respondent who attended that meeting would also have been aware that that was the terms under which consent was being granted. It knew that there was going to be some indefinite period of section one oh six negotiations. There's no way of knowing how long that would be, but the only authority was to issue a condition with all those terms. It was not, and never has been, the intention to challenge the grant of that planning permission.
Who actually attended for the first respondent?
It was a representative of the company, I can give you a name.
Is that in evidence?
My lord, it's in the, yes, I think it probably is, but it's certainly in the minutes I just showed your lordship to of the meeting. Oh, no, sorry, it's not, that's the representative of the applicant. I think it is in evidence, I'll see if I can trace, track a...
If I trace there somewhere, I couldn't immediately see it when I flicked through.
But the minutes record that a petitioner addressed the meeting. Was that?
That was Christine Murray.
I think that wasn't, that wasn't us.
That was somebody else.
My lord, I'll see if we can find a reference in, if there is a reference in the evidence, I, if I look for it.
I know it stays in your, in your written submissions. I don't know whether it's common ground or not, I couldn't find it in the evidence myself.
We know that, he remained instructed throughout this period or not?
Well, my lord, that's a point my learned friend makes, is what remained instructed. He certainly wasn't instructed, as I, as I think he says in one of the statements, to review or keep this under constant review. He was instructed to make objections. He wasn't instructed on a sort of rolling basis. That is, I believe, in evidence in second witness statement. And if, subject to the point about who attended, my lord, but just standing back for a moment, the objector knows that what has been the only resolution that's been made by the authority is to grant a planning commission with a condition, amongst other things, for five years only.
I don't get it, can you actually show me the evidence about that? I think this is quite important. I'm sure you're right.
Well...
I think we just sort of showed the evidence.
Mr., just picking up on, if I did turn, the point my lordship raised, second witness statement, Mr Gilbert, page one eight five, deals with the instruction that he had. Paragraphs four and five, he had an instruction to make an initial objection. Paragraph five, he had an instruction to make a representation to the government office in North West, to have the application called in. So it's a partial answer to my lord's question, or the master's role, because the, in order to make the representation about calling, one has to know the resolution that was made at the committee meeting. So Mr Gilbert was instructed, following that committee meeting and the resolution that was made, to make a request for call in of the application.
Did you just thought, I mean, I just thought that if you're going to make an application for it to be called in, you'd actually see what the actual planning permission was?
Well, my lord, well, can I just, let me just deal that. What you know, what you know is that the only authority is that which has been set out in the planning resolution by the council.
Have you, you haven't shown me who attended this meeting?
My lord, I haven't because I'm not sure it identifies who attended.
But where does it say someone actually did it? I don't, maybe, I don't know, maybe Mr Evans could help on your speed while you're speaking.
I'm afraid I can't assist on that, my lord, we don't have any notes of personnel who attended.
No, no, I just mentioned the evidence here.
Yeah, I, my lord, I don't know, there's the answer of life. We don't think it's in the evidence.
It's not in the evidence. So, so basically what you're relying on, we had it on the evidence. So what you're relying upon, I think at the end of the day, is paragraph five of, and it may be sufficient, of Mr Gilbert's witness statement, that was your really reliable.
My lord, I'd understood that it was in evidence and so in the controversy that someone was actually there, but if that's not, if that's not in evidence, what is in evidence is that the interested party knew the terms of the resolution made on that. Sorry, I'm so sorry, the first respondent
Yes, your client.
My client.
Yes.
Knew the terms of the resolution that was made at that meeting.
Maybe Mr Bokart Murray's got instructions, he can agree something was there, I've no idea.
My lord, I just said instructions, Mr Landor was at the...
But that is in evidence.
Meeting, and that is in evidence. And he, it is not in evidence, as I understand it, Mr, who on behalf of our friends' clients was there? And Mr Landor doesn't know.
Right, well, that's what's... It's, the relevant bit of Mr Gilbert's evidence, I think, is paragraph fifteen and page one five nine. He certainly doesn't say that he attended. And he doesn't actually identify that anyone attended. He was aware of the officer's report. At the top of page one sixty, he suggests that interested parties had no opportunity to comment on the officer's report, I think that's the thrust of it. And then he's aware of the outcome of the meeting. Did the judge say, did the judge say he thought somebody had attended? Did the judge deal with this?
Claimant was among the objectors, is what it says, it doesn't say. An agent of the claimant attended, paragraph eleven.
Where did he get that?
I don't, my lord, I presume it was a submission or might have been taken as a submission at the hearing itself from, from the parties.
There's no evidence of that. It may not make any difference at all.
Well, my lord, it's not, I put it in this way, it's in the judgment. It's not a factual conclusion which is challenged in front of this court. It's not a, as I understand it, and the if it were said to be not correct and it mattered, I would expect it to be challenged.
A matter of conjecture, but at that stage the claimant would be represented by other leading counsel.
That's correct.
And it's possible, we don't know, it's possible that it was an exchange of the judge and leading counsel. and leading counsel.
It is possible, I obviously can't take it any further than that. But if, my lord, is, it's in the judgment, it's not controversial so far as the appellant's concerned, otherwise, no doubt, they would have added it to the grounds of appeal. And then, no doubt, we could have produced a witness statement as to precisely what happened at the hearing, or whatever. But for my part, I don't, unless your lordship wants to pursue it further, the central point for my purposes is that the claimant knew of the minutes, or the resolution, and, as Mr Gilbert makes plain in his witness statement, and those obviously contain the insurance or how on, the authority, the limited authority to grant permission on the terms identified. So, my lord, where I was in the chronology, if anything else turns up, I can assist in what happened at the hearing, I'll, I'll no doubt be told. The planning committee makes its decision, the officers then go away and give effect to it. And, my lord, that is part of the statutory code. My learned friend talks about Pioneer and the importance of statutory code, but section seventy of the nineteen ninety act is a power to grant planning permission on the local planning authority, that's the council. The council can delegate power to an officer, but subject to that delegated, the terms of the authority that's given by the council. The planning committee has already been delegated the functions to determine planning applications by the council through a scheme of delegation. It then, in this case, because it was a matter that had to go to committee as a major application, I've shown you the passage in the committee report. It then decides the application and gives whatever powers, be it a refusal, or grant, or grant on conditions, to the officer. The officer has no power to step outside that authority. And to do so is just as much a breach of the statutory code as was being identified in the Pioneer case. My learned friend submitted, well, what, how the council regulates itself is something outside the planning code, well, it's not. The planning code identifies the decision has to be taken by the council, and it's therefore highly relevant whether or not an officer issues something without authority.
Entirely parallel, it's not, it's entirely.
Entirely. There is no distinction of principle between issuing a permission when you were told to issue a refusal, as compared with issuing a permission which is unlimited in duration, when you were told to issue one for five years. Both are unlawful, both are without authority, and both are classic examples where the court will step in to intervene and quash the unlawful act, subject, of course, to the extension of time. And my learned friend's criticisms of the judge in that respect, in my submission, are baseless. Indeed, they don't even make a lot of sense, because much of his case is focused upon the principle that a judicial review claim should have been brought earlier. But at the same time, he's saying, had a judicial review been brought at all, he would have argued there was no power to rectify the mistake. Well, that, my lord, cannot be right, it is not right on the face of the authorities. Although, then what happened, of course, is that the, following the resolution, there was a period of over a year, fourteen months, during which negotiations took place between the council and the appellant, negotiating the terms of a section one oh six, to which no party was privy. Indeed, when we asked for the section one oh six on this issue arising, and you'll see Mr Gordon's witness statement, we were refused access initially to the section one oh six on the basis it was confidential. And so, my lord, all that the appellant knew, of course, was that there was authority to issue a five-year permission, as to when that would happen, no one knew. And as it turns out, it took more than fifteen months for the section one oh six to be negotiated. My learned friend is putting forward a proposition that a party who is content with the terms of a resolution, because it says what it says, is under a duty to instruct someone to monitor, presumably on a daily basis, the council's website for an indefinite period until such time as a planning permission eventually emerges, following negotiations of a section one oh six agreement. Your lordships may or may not be aware, section one oh six negotiations can take years. My lord, that is, if that's right, a startling proposition, that a party who has only the legitimate expectation that a planning permission would be issued in the terms authorized, is under a duty to check that everything goes according to that which the council has ordered.
There was no notice to interested parties. One oh six is finished, here's the planning permission come.
No, my lord, absolutely not. There's no notice of what's going on behind the scenes, and when a planning permission is eventually issued, no notice that's been issued.
That presumably is, is true virtually every planning permission application.
My lord, that, that is right. If one turns up to a, or takes part in a planning process, and you object to the planning application, and you are planning to challenge the resolution and the subsequent issue of the decision, you can do one of two things. You can challenge the resolution to start with, you don't have to wait until the grant of permission, and this has been up to the House of Lords, is it then, in the case of Burkett? But you are entitled to await the decision notice itself before bringing the challenge. But if you do so, you have to be aware that the decision notice may come at some unknown point in the future, and you have to be alert to monitor the situation, because you're expecting a decision notice which you are aggrieved by and you're intending to challenge.
Well, for example, they may or may not have a section one oh eight agreement, I don't.
Sorry.
You can't be certain whether there will be planning permission, if, if their condition is an agreement, appropriate terms for section one oh six agreement.
It may never result.
It may or may not result, I mean.
That's right.
But in this area, the policy of the laws, I understand it, is to approach a very harsh approach, on one foot, it's a very, very harsh approach, which is, if you don't know within three months, too bad.
Well, my lord, that, that's, that's not the approach, with respect, the approach is, you need to challenge within three months. If you don't know what's happened, generally speaking, save in exceptional circumstances, it will be too bad, and the reason for that, in the Gerber type case, and the, as I'll show you, your lordship, the person who takes part in the planning process is deemed to know what the decision made by the council is. What is the terms of the resolution? The terms of the resolution, if they are to grant planning permission on terms that you find unacceptable, allow you to bring a challenge to that, or to await the decision notice itself. If the terms of the resolution, as in this case, are on terms that you are not aggrieved by or intending to challenge, you have no expectation, let alone requirement, in my submission, to check that the council is actually, the officers are actually going to issue a planning permission in the terms they said they would. So, my lord, things get a little bit worse, as I've explained on the facts here, but, and certainly, it's a surprising proposition that an applicant is under some duty to monitor the situation, where it can assume that the resolution is going to be acted on faithfully according to its terms. That's precisely the, if you flip it on its head, if the, if you objected in principle to the permission being granted at all on any terms, and you see a resolution saying, subject to one oh six, issue a permission in due course, then, yes, you're under a duty to monitor, or indeed, you can challenge the resolution then and there, you're under a duty to monitor when that permission might come into play. You're not going to get any notice of it. But that's a very different situation to that which my clients found themselves in here.
This is a very unusual case, you say, and it may actually be very unusual, in which a local planning authority fails to issue a planning permission and causes its own resolution.
Precisely, my lord.
That's really another particularity of your advocacy.
Well.
And that, that puts you immediately in a factually exceptional situation, you say.
I, I do submit that, and it's, it's in direct contrast to Finn Kelsey, Gerber, Connors, where in each and every one of those cases, take Gerber for example, someone didn't, says they didn't know about the planning application, and only found out about it once development was started, but they're deemed to have had the opportunity to participate in the process and know the outcome because of the notification procedures. But by contrast here, we did participate, the result that was authorized is the one that we are prepared to live with, with no reason to challenge it, five-year permission. We expect in due course, that, entitled to expect under the presumption of regularity or legitimate expectation, however one might put, put it, that the officers will act in accordance with their authority. And certainly, it is exceptional to find that they don't, and I don't accept that this is a common occurrence, my learned friend makes that assertion. There's no evidence that this is a common occurrence, mistakes do happen, we've seen an example in the Norfolk case, that they're very unusual to happen in such dark terms. And where they do happen, the court has the power to step in, in an exceptional case, to allow for an extension of time, bearing in mind questions of prejudice that may arise, which is what I want to turn to. Is this appellant truly prejudiced by the late challenge that occurred at the end of the five-year period? In my submission, no, for the following reasons. What you have been shown is the, what my learned friend calls the bogus document, are page ninety of the bundle, twentieth, oh, so sorry, it's page eighty-seven of the bundle, the November two thousand and eleven. Permission that appeared in, on the website in May two thousand and twelve. But pausing for a moment, describing it as a bogus document, it's actually the planning permission in its form, which the appellant had understood would be granted, and was included in the signed section one oh six agreement, because it contains the relevant conditions.
What is the point you're making?
My lord, is the appellant prejudiced by what actually occurred? The, the so-called bogus document contains all of the conditions that would be expected. What actually was issued on the twentieth of December was the document without the conditions, and you've got that at page ninety, but the appellant, as they've made clear, knew that that was a mistake. They knew it was outside the terms of the officer's authority. Had they looked at the case law with advice, they would know that it was an unlawful permission outside the terms of the authority. And they knew, would know, that of course, absent other people knowing this, the, it was a document at risk. It was at risk of challenge within the three-month period, and would have been quashed, undoubtedly, if it, time wasn't an issue, no one disputes that. And it's at risk after the three-month period, if the court decides to extend time for exceptional circumstances, they know, they must, or they should be deemed to know that. What do they do, other than check the website to see whether the document's on the website? Mr Landall does nothing. At least, there's no evidence of him doing anything. They don't raise it with the planning authority, they sit silent, or at least he does. What, the gap in the evidence, however, or the silence, relates to what Mr Landall did with the notice vis a vis his client, the appellant. One assumes, I think that it's, we're told, it was sent to the appellant, but there's no details of what Mr Landall advised his appellant was the consequence of this document. There no one, no point is there any evidence, he said, you can rely upon this document as a permanent permission, you've had a windfall, you've got a document that we all know is a mistake, don't say anything, and we'll see what happens. There's no evidence of that kind, of what the appellant was told. What we do know is that the council, obviously in May, took that document down. But my learned friend hasn't told you, but it's in the evidence, that whilst that document was on the website, there were two other versions of the decision notice on the website at the same time, and those were the versions with the conditions on. All that Mr Landall says, when he checked the website, he saw those other versions, one, page one hundred and seventy-two, you have to piece it together, the July two thousand and seventeen council report tells us that they were versions with the conditions on. Paragraph six, I therefore checked the council public access website to see if the decision notice was on the public record, it was. There are also two other decision notices, which as far as I can recollect, appeared to be drafts. That's, that's as much as he says.
Where are those documents?
My lord, they're referred to in the July two thousand and seventeen report, and I'm not sure the council kept them.
Well, the council took them down.
They took down the one of them, and then they put the, what my learned friend calls the bogus document up.
Well, they took down, as I understood it, they took down.
All of them.
All three.
I'm just finding the.
Including, including the planning permission made. What did they do with the other two?
My lord. It's paragraph two point eight of the July two thousand and seventeen report, page one hundred and thirty-five.
One, three, five.
In fact, we're not even told what the other versions were. Paragraph one, three, sorry, page one hundred and thirty-five.
Yeah.
Paragraph two point eight, this is the council's, what's referred to as the mayor corpora report.
Yes, but we're looking, we're looking to see exactly what the corpora was.
Well, my lord, from our perspective, we don't know, but what all we know is what we've been told. We didn't look at the website, and I've already explained why my clients wouldn't have done, or needed to. If you had looked at the website, as Mr Landall did, you would have seen that decision notice, you would have seen two other decision notices, two other versions of a decision.
Well, the best, the best we get is a two-eight, and at this point, it appears that these three notices were taken down.
Yes, that's what we know.
And the reason why it has to be written that way, it might be said, is because so much time has now gone by. much time has now gone by, the personnel have changed, and nobody's quite sure what.
Well, my lord, that's maybe the case.
I think we made it a bit more, 2.5, 27th May 2011, the draft decision notice was uploaded to the website. And then, 2.6, notice published to the website, further draft, but it did list all the relevant conditions. So it looks as if at least one of the draft versions had all the relevant conditions in it.
My lord, I think both drafts would have done, because the draft decision notice attached to the 106 had all the conditions. And, well, actually, yes, you're right, 2.6, I don't know what it would have had. At least one of the versions would have had all the conditions on.
Piecing the jigs all together, we probably have the picture that the May and November and September drafts were uploaded and left. They, of course, weren't signed.
Well, they were signed, strangely, yes. Because you can see the draft, you can see in the section 106, it actually is, your lordship looked at it in Schedule II, it's a signed document.
We do know that they were signed.
My lord, yes, because the version attached to the 106, I think it's got the, it does have watermark draft, I think, on it, so.
How do we know that the May and September drafts were signed?
Well, just taken from 2.5. On 27th May, a draft decision notice was prepared to be appended to the section 106 agreement that was sent to the applicant's agents for signing. So if I'm inferring that that's the 106 didn't alter, but certainly Schedule II of the 106 contains a signed version, that's my inference.
We know that, but I'm not asking you about that, I'm asking you about the May and September document.
My lord, I, well, I can't, I don't know.
I mean, get the, slot up memories of that, maybe.
My lord, just for the record, my lord, I don't, I can't anticipate whether this affects the thinking of the court, but if you look at Mr Landor's witness statement at tab 26, paragraph 9, he lists the positive forest of documents on the website, including those that my lord is canvassing, and says, these are produced as exhibit six. They were in the High Court as exhibit six, and in preparing for this court, the hard copy case file, I'm instructed, the hard copy case file, and I have them in front of me, because I've kept the High Court bundle, so everybody involved in this litigation, absent my learned friend specifically, but all the parties, knew of that exhibit.
And were they in fact signed?
There's one that's undated, and, and signed. There's one that's dated 27 July 2011, and signed. And there's one that's undated, stamped draft, again, signed. I'm just, I'm just reading from the.
What is your submission?
My submission, my lord, is twofold. First is, had, as Mr Landor said, looked at the, someone looked at the website in that period, December to May, they would have been confronted with three versions of decision notices, all of which appear to have been signed, including a version that had the conditions on it. At best, my lord, I can't, because I didn't visit the website myself, I can't take it much further, but at best, one would say the position was confused. But if you were seeking to establish the correct position, you would have known from the same website that the only authority that the council had was to issue the versions that were, or contained the conditions, because that was the terms of the authority of the minutes of the meeting. But yes, you would have seen presumably, if one had looked, the December 2011 version as well. But certainly, the position would have been, as I said, at best confused. We, my client, didn't look at the website, there's no evidence that anyone else looked at the website in that period, nor had any particular reason to, because they weren't aware, and wouldn't have been aware, that a document had been issued in December 2011, and there's no statutory or other procedure for notifying parties that documents had gone on the website in that way. But the very best Mr Landor can really get from looking at the website is an uncertain position, certainly a precarious one, and certainly one, if he's saying he relied upon the December version, one in which he knew a mistake had been made. So in that five-month period, where it's said time is technically running against my client, even though they have no knowledge that this is happening, had they gone to the website, in my submission, they would have best be confronted with a confused position as anyone else would have done. In May, although this appears to relate to a time when there were then six notices up on the website, page nine, when Mr Landor visited in May, we know from the July 2017 report that the, eventually the correct version of the, what should have been the correct version of the notice, was put on the website. And any member of the public, my client's, public at large, from May onwards, from 2012, would have been clearly of the view that the correct permission had been issued and was operative. And that position prevailed until matters came to a head in 2017, at which point my client, once they became aware.
Was it June 17?
I think it was July 2017 was when we were sent the report that I've just taken your lordships to, that's the first, we were told that there was a problem, and we then acted with an expedition and bring the claim, no one suggests otherwise.
So just putting, on your analysis, then, between December, well, between the signing of the section 106 agreement, or the execution of that deed, and May 2012, Thornton Holdings were without any planning permission, or they had a planning permission, but it was an unlawful grant?
They had a planning permission issued on, in December 2011, which they knew was unlawful. They knew, there's no other way of looking at it. It's not, and, my lord, your lordship's obviously extremely familiar with this area of challenges to planning permissions, where the challenge doesn't actually really lie to the decision notice, but to the process, i.e. there's an error in the committee report which led to the grant of permission. That's where there's a latent defect in the process, which someone may want to challenge, but which a developer won't necessarily be aware of, they won't have thought of the same points as the prospective litigant. They may believe the planning permission is perfectly lawful, this developer knew.
Yes, for Mr Lockhart Mummers, he's been very candid, he says that, yes, he accepts that they knew there was a mistake had been made.
Yes, but my lord, that A, takes us out of all of the previous cases that we've looked at, or haven't looked at, and B, demonstrates when one talks about prejudice, to what extent can you fairly say you're prejudiced in relying upon a document you know to be unlawful? Certainly in the Taffeli case, the court was very clear, you can't rely upon a document you know to be unlawful, at all. That's what the court said, and in my submission, that's why this case is a very exceptional case, that they knew. But I want to just take your lordships a little bit further by May. What did the appellant do? Well, they didn't raise it with the authority, even though they had this confused position, but they then, let's be clear, acted in a way entirely contrary to the notion that they were relying upon that planning permission at all. And back to the chronology, which my learned friend just simply doesn't deal with, didn't deal with at all. If you pick up the supplementary bundle again, the first document that occurs in the bundle after the issue is a document, page 92, a letter from the council dated the 14th of June 2012, so contemporaneous with that period, complaining about failure to comply with the covenants in the section 106 agreement. Page 92. There's no evidence of what answer was ever given, I'm not sure an answer was ever used. But apropos of the debate earlier in the day, on my lord's analysis and Mr Lockhart Mummers' analysis, the appellant was under the impression that they weren't bound by the section 106 at all. You recall, he said it's conditional upon the grant of a permission in the terms, his submission is, they were not bound by the section 106. A letter comes from the local planning authority, saying you need to comply with the covenants, no response that I'm aware of, let alone a response to the effect, what are you talking about? We don't, we're not bound by the section 106 at all, because you've issued a permission different to that, which is in Schedule II.
Well, again, what do you get from that?
Well, my lord, I get from that, that if you're sitting back and creating the impression to the authority that the position is one which is bound by the section 106 and the permission, you can hardly then complain that you've been prejudiced by a late challenge that subsequently occurs. Lord, the next document, page 94, just bears a little bit of screeching unconscious at the time, but this is an application on a council form, made on the 13th of March 2013, you get the date on page 96. This is, see the heading, application for approval of details reserved by condition. It's made by the appellant, by Mr Paul Doughty of SDA, another architect or planning agent. So it's made by the appellant. Over the page, pre-application advice, there had been a site visit by the council with this agent to the site on the 12th of February 2013, at which site visitor explained the information required. What were they submitting for approval? You will see, section five, proposed erection of three marquees, they gave the reference number of the planning permission at 11000445, they gave the date of the decision, 11th of November 2011. That is the document my learned friend is now describing as bogus. If that is right, the appellant was making a bogus application on a bogus document. This is an application to discharge the conditions on the November 2011 document. The other important point to note, my lord, the evidence is silent about this, the appellant clearly had the November 2011 document. It said Mr Landor first saw it, the words are chosen very carefully, Mr Landor saw it first time in 2017. The appellant clearly didn't, nor did its other agents, because they were making an application based upon it in 2013 to discharge all of the conditions. None of this was explained to the court. What happens? He pays a fee of £91, over the page 96, and at the bottom of page 95, he's attached a master site plan and specification of the works for discharge of each one of those conditions, noise, barriers, car parking, et cetera. We're even told when the development started, if you've got that at page 95, just above discharge of condition, has the development already started? If yes, please state when the development started. November 2011. My lords, how can it properly be said that this appellant is prejudiced by reliance upon a December 2011 document, when their agent has gone in, in writing, confirming that they actually started the development in November 2011?
Where did that passage?
It's 95, just below the second hole punch. Has the development already started? If yes, please state when the development started, November 2011. That predates the December document. And over the page, my lords, declaration, we hereby apply for pangment, which is described in this form, country drawings, we confirm to best of my knowledge, any facts stated are true and accurate, and any opinions given are genuine opinions of the persons giving them. These are important documents, they're not, they're not just applications you can make without being candid. So my lords, what we know from the contemporaries document, not addressed before your lordship, is that the appellant, through this particular agent, has the November 2011 document, is treating it as not bogus, to the contrary, they're discharging the conditions under it. They've already started the development in November 2011, before receipt of the December document. They're paying money to their consultant, both for the fee and also for the production of work to discharge it, and they've had a site visit. The planning officers come to the site to discuss what's required. My lord, that is no longer being silent, and that is why the judge talked about unconscionable conduct. That is, in effect, endorsing the veracity of a document you know to be bogus. It's impossible to see it in any other way. And my lords, it doesn't stop there. Page 17, tab 17, the installation of septic tanks. My learned friend relies, or still relies upon the installation of septic tanks, there's evidence that we'd gave, which isn't controverted, that these were actually installed, at least one of them was installed prior to any permission being granted. But these septic tank installations don't persist at all, one way or the other, as to whether the appellant was under the impression they had a permanent permission. They're certainly contradicted by the documents I've just shown you, that they knew they had a temporary permission with conditions attached to it. But if you turn to page 99, sorry, that's the other septic tank one, if you turn to page 102, on the 25th of July 2013, the council issued another notice granting an application made by the appellant for an extension to the existing marquee. Again, issued, this time to Mr Daniel Turner, and you can see, condition one, the extensions hereby approved shall be for a temporary period only, expiring on the 11th of November 2016. That's the five-year period, of course, for the marquees. Reason, to minimise the impact on the green belt and to accord with the temporary consent for the marquee. So what the appellant and its agent received back from the authority is a temporary consent reflecting what the council is unequivocally identifying is a temporary consent for the original marquee. Rightly or wrongly, that is the council's understanding. Does the appellant know that's the understanding? Of course. Does the... Does the appellant challenge this decision? No. They say we're prejudiced, we might have issued an appeal had we known that it was not permanent. My lords, there's no appeal against this. And indeed, if you had received this and believed you had a permanent permission, you would have immediately say, what on earth is going on? We have a permanent permission. Why have you imposed a condition on our extension which is unlawful? Again, none of this dealt with. So when it comes, that covers the period two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. When it comes to the crunch, when would either the council or in any other party actually get to know that there's a dispute about the five-year condition? Of course, when the five-year period comes to an end, which it did at the end of two thousand and sixteen. And in my submission, if you know that there's an unlawful permission that's been issued to you, people are assuming that there's a five-year limit, as the council has indicated. You know that come November two thousand and sixteen, the issue's going to come to a head. And you are proceeding at risk in that knowledge, either sitting silent or in fact, in my submission, positively creating or endorsing the impression that the November two thousand and eleven permission was the one that was the relevant one. And I ask it inspirisporatorically, how much more exceptional can one get than that? And if I, my learned friend, to find any case where the appellant has actually not just sat silent, but actually can, I call it endorse, but however one wants to put it, and made an application on what they believed apparently was a bogus document. Certainly so far as the public are concerned and the public interest is completely contrary to the public interest. And it's antithetical to expect the claim to the interested party to know that there's a problem. I've taken your lordships to page one hundred and ten, which was the crunch time coming. The council understandably, at this stage, believing there's a temporary consent right to the company after the temporary consent period has expired, notifying the unauthorized marquees. And that's when the issue comes to a head. There's a meeting we're not party to. And eventually it emerges for the first time that the appellant's now relying upon the December document. They've never relied upon it before in front of any party. To the contrary, they relied on the November two thousand and eleven, what they called bogus document. This is the first time they show their hand. And at that point, of course, prompt expeditious challenges brought by my clients after the local authority don't issue proceedings themselves.
I'd just like to set up the time. We've got two hours now. We've got to allow Mr, as an opportunity to say something. How much longer are you going to be now? He said he might be half an hour. That would take us a quarter, if he stopped in five, ten minutes, that would take him up to twenty past four.
I suspect I might not be that long because I think just about everything I would have said has probably been canvassed. I will add, I think, probably a few short points. My lord, I'm conscious I'm on borrowed time in that case, and I will try and be as short as I can. I've come to the end of the facts because at this point, there's no dispute that we've acted expeditiously. The period in question, in reality, relates to that period in December two thousand and eleven through to May two thousand and twelve, when we're supposed to have monitored throughout and brought the challenge. I've explained why we don't consider that that's right. I've explained why it's exceptional. And in any event, to meet your lordship's point, the court has the power to extend time beyond that five-month period if there's good reason. And in my submission, sorry, well, yeah. So my lord, you asked me what's exceptional about this case? And can I just give you, there's quite a long list, but can I just tell you what they are? First of all, the permission was issued unlawfully with no authority by the officer. Secondly, that was known by the appellant. And if the appellant likes, also by the council. That's a point in my favour. Thirdly, with that knowledge, the appellant on its case did nothing to confront the issue. Fourthly, in May two thousand and twelve, the council suppressed any ability for the public to know there was a problem in, as my learned friend puts it, by putting up the two thousand and eleven notice. They put up the November two thousand and eleven and took down the December one.
So, sorry, the council suppressed the notice. I mean, that, you lay squarely at the door of the council.
Well, my lord, I'm not, I'm laying it squarely at the door of either the council or the appellant.
How can you let the door of the appellant, maybe many other things?
No, I can't, no, not for suppression, I can't, no, not the suppression, no.
You've been piling them up.
No, your lordship's right, sorry, retract that. What I meant to say was the position's a bit more nuanced in the sense that there were at least three documents on the website, and my learned friend characterizes it as a suppression.
Well, one analysis, you can say this, and perhaps you ought to be given the chance to confirm it for Mr Evans. Let's hear some questions here. The council evidently knew that something had gone wrong in late two thousand and twelve or by late two thousand and twelve. Because he acted at that point to take down the three documents that were on the website, including the planning permission that he'd issued. And to put up a document which was effectively predated.
Yes.
The council, for its part, as I understand it, did not alert the parties involved in the case to the fact that it knew something had gone wrong. Is that right?
I'm not aware of them alerting.
And they didn't alert your?
Certainly didn't alert my client, I don't, I don't believe they, no.
They didn't alert Mr Lockhart Murray's client. So you say the council suppressed the ability, your client's ability to act?
Yes, my lord, because in a conventional case, if you're talking about a five-year delay, you're talking about something that's on the public register, which is available for someone to challenge or a decision that's out there to challenge. They know about it for that whole period. Here, once that document has gone, we didn't know it was there in the first place, but once it's gone, it's not, it wouldn't even be open to anyone to notice that there was a problem after May two thousand and twelve because the documents have been removed.
Five years goes by, and as we see when it comes to the July two thousand and seventeen report, they can't explain to the members what happened.
No, that's fine.
Because people have moved on. So it was all covered in that opacity of that stuff.
It's saved for what then happens between the council and the appellant, which is important between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen. Because whilst it was suppressed from us, the facts weren't suppressed at that subsequent, from the subsequent events from the appellant. Because they then acted on the November two thousand and eleven document. They must have received it. Mr Landor says he didn't, but the appellant did and his other agent did. They were the only ones who would know there was a problem, not us nor the public. The appellant knew that there was a problem from the council.
Your fault, except?
Sorry, yeah.
The council suppressed the ability to act. That means your client's ability to act.
Or anyone else. Fifth, the planning permission wasn't issued to anyone else. And there's no evidence that anyone else knew about it, save for the public. Seventh, the appellant.
Sixth.
Oh, so sorry. Sixth, the appellant wasn't just silent. They acted on the basis of the November two thousand and eleven document. At least twice. And I think I'm on seven. The temporary nature of the permission that should have been issued means that the opportunity to discover something had gone wrong only arose at the end of the five-year period. What I call the crunch time. In contrast to cases where you see development going up, where you can say, well, hold on a minute, where's the permission for that? Am I on eight?
Yes.
As soon as it became apparent that that was the case, the claimant acted extremely promptly. Ninth.
That's not, that's not, that's not the reason why it's exceptional.
Well, my lord, it's part of the?
These are the reasons why it's exceptional.
Yes. Well, my lord, it's part of the package, but if your lordship wants to exclude it on the basis, it's not a point against us, I suppose. But we did actually, your lordship see, act extremely quickly. Ninth, my lords, there isn't actually any reasonable evidence of prejudice caused to the appellant for all the reasons that I've just been through. They knew and acted on the November two thousand and eleven permission. And by contrast, in terms of exceptional circumstances, there is very plain prejudice, not just to my client, who isn't allowed marquees in the green belt and other people, but to the planning system. Because if this permission is not quashed, a permanent consent for these marquees with none of the conditions that should have been attached and with no requirement to use the money for restoration will have been granted in perpetuity, contrary to the green belt, grade two star listed building, grade two star registered park and garden. The prejudice to the public benefit of allowing that to occur is huge. And, my lord, that really summarizes what's exceptional. I just need to emphasize, can I just give you some references for the authorities? I'll do this as quickly as I can. First of all, in relation to the point about acting without authority, you have in the bundle Taff Ely case, and I just draw your lordship's attention to what's said at page eleven of the report.
Acting without authority, tab number?
It's tab fourteen, Cooperative Real Estate Services in Taff Ely. And it's the passage of Lord Denning, what must be taken at its face value. Page eleven, top half of the document is actually two three eight of the law report itself. But if you look at page eleven at the top, there's some pagination at the top. Must it be taken at its face value? And the answer is no. Applying the Norfolk case, as you'll see in the central passage, people may act on it and it will have that effect, they act on it, but can someone who knows its altruism rely upon it? Answer no. Applying that to this case of grant of planning permission was altruism void, so Tesco cannot rely on it. They cannot build a superstore in the faith of it. In contrast, the conveyance to someone else may have been good. Norfolk County Council, tab fifteen, that's cited in that case. Lord Widgery, page six seven five, letter.
So Wick Town.
Sorry, it's the next tab, my lord, tab fifteen, tab fifteen. It's six seven five A to B and then six seven six E to F.
Six seven, six seven eight to B.
Six seven six E to F. And your lordships may note, at six seven seven, they deal with the question of mistake. And being happy that in the conclusion, the appeal should succeed because it produces for everybody the exact same position that the mistake had not been made, which, that's at six seven seven H. This is a parrot call to remedy what everyone knows is a mistake. And then, my lords.
Sorry, I'm not finding your fashion, sir.
I'm so sorry, my lord, that was, that was.
I'm sorry, I've got it now. E to G, yes.
On six seven seven, it's, yes. And F, what one hopes to achieve in a situation like this where there's been an honest mistake is that everybody shall end up in the position which they would have been if no mistake had been made. Well, couldn't speak, put it better than for this case, than quashing this permission. And my lord, then, if, I said, I just charted those three cases where there have been consideration of extensions time, Finn Kelsey's at tab seven. I gave you the reference to paragraph twenty-five as to what satisfies promptness. And at paragraph twenty-nine, having found that the claim is not brought promptly, the court then said it's necessary to go and look on the substance of the claim, i.e. the underlying invalidity, before deciding whether or not to knock it out. The lordships can see that, paragraph twenty-nine. So even in cases where the decision, it's not been brought prompt, the court doesn't stop there. It looks at the substance of the underlying illegality because that can affect the question of whether or not to extend time. And then Gerber, which your lordships will find in the same bundle of authorities at tab two. Can I invite your lordships to read at some point paragraphs eighteen through to thirty-five, because Lord Justice Sale sets out the facts in much more detail than the head note. And your lordships will see from that that the context of Mr Gerber not saying he knew about the application was in circumstances where there'd been two public consultations in the village of the proposal, advertisements in the parish hall notice board, and then notices sent out in accordance with the procedural order. So whilst they accepted that he didn't have notice, it was fair to assume that he, the council had done everything it could to bring it to the attention of the parties through those processes. And thereafter, your lordships will see the immediate divergence from the facts here. The company spent a huge amount of money on the strength of the permission after it had been granted and indeed constructed the solar farm, paragraph twenty-three. A new company entered into a twenty-five year lease, the company, Solar Farm, was built. And in the meantime, Mr Gerber took legal advice which suggested he didn't have a claim, even though. even though he knew about the notice, so there were two periods of delay. In interfering with the court's decision below, Lord Justice Sales exercised the Court of Appeals discretion having regard to the error that had been made about legitimate expectation. In my submission, there's no such error on the part of the judge here. There was, there's no in, way in, of the striking of the balance, but in paragraph forty-eight and forty-nine, the underlying principle of Gerber is explained by Lord Justice Sales, where a fair opportunity has been given to objectors to learn in good time about the proposed development. In compliance with the notification rules, then in view of the possible harm, it was reasonable to expect them to move with speed. I'm sorry, sorry. Forty-eight, D to E. And then forty-nine. And, my lords, when you analyze the facts of Gerber, they are a classic example of not allowing extension to the conventional situation, but emphasizing that none of the exceptional circumstances, certainly none of the factors I've identified, were present. And then in Connors, my Lord Justice Limbong's judgment, I gave you the paragraph numbers, but it's, I think, seventy-four to eighty-seven of that judgment, which again analyzes the facts. Connors is a tab one. Seventy-four through to eighty-seven explains why there was no basis for interfering with the judge below's discretion not to extend time. Again, very different circumstances, the applicants knew that their decision had been called in, and they had the ability to challenge as soon as that occurred. Instead, they chose to await a long time and indeed await the outcome of their underlying planning appeal. But paragraph eighty-seven is the passage I cited at the outset. It all depends on the facts. Rarely appropriate, I accept, I accept rarely appropriate, don't do me off now, but it all depends on the facts. Can I refer you to my skirt and I'll, where I pick up on the alleged errors that are said to have occurred in the judge's submissions? And I just want, I dealt with condition one, which is said to have been misunderstood by the judge. Dealt with his view of the planning merits, so I don't repeat any of those submissions, but, my lord, I do invite you to read his judgment again, to see whether there is any actual error in the way he approached it. My submission, no. And indeed, he directed it himself earlier in the judgment to those passages relied upon in Gerber, where he was directed to the correct tests, and he went on to apply them. Is there anything surprising in the outcome he reached? I submit not at all, when you take into account the facts he had for him. My lords, I trespass on my learned friend's time all the time, but.
Thank you, my lords. I just want to deal briefly with three or four short topics. Generally, I adopt the submissions of Malonied Friend, Mr. Strong. The first matter I just wanted to say a few words about was the alleged misunderstanding by the judge of the intended scope of condition one in relation to the permission as it should have been issued, as we put it. I think the court has reached the point that the correct analysis of the situation is that whilst there wasn't any obligation in the condition for the marquees to be removed at the end of a five-year period, it was nevertheless a permission which was limited in time. And to that extent, when that time period was up, the marquees would then be at that point unlawful. And I wholly subscribe to that analysis. What I just wanted to do very briefly was just set that within the statutory scheme and then relate that to what the judge said and those paragraphs that Mr. Lockhart Mumry relies on in order to say that the judge misunderstood the scope of the condition. And I should say, I don't think there are any submissions made to the judge, certainly not in detail on this particular point at the hearing below. Could I just go very briefly, my lord, to tab, tab, tab twenty-one of the authorities bundle? That's section seventy-two of the Town and Country Planning Act, which deals with conditional grants of planning permission. And sub-paragraph B of subsection one enables an authority to impose a condition for requiring the removal of any buildings or works authorized by a permission or a discontinuance of a use of land at a specified, at the end of a specified period. And such, such a condition brings in train with it the definition at sub-paragraph two, which is a permission granted for a limited period. And one of the particular consequences of a permission granted for a limited period is found in section fifty-seven, which is tab seventeen, which prescribes in subsection two that where you have such a permission granted for a limited period, planning permission is not normally required for the resumption at the end of that period of its use for the purpose for which it was normally used before the permission was granted. So those are the statutory powers. But none of that undercuts the point that if a permission is time limited and then that time limit goes past, then the development is unlawful at that point. And my submission, when that is tied into what the judge said, is that the judge didn't betray any misunderstanding of what the scope of that condition was. I understand, Malonied Friend, to have relied particularly on paragraph forty-eight of the judgment, where the judge says, in this case, the presence of the marquees was not contrary to the intended scope of the planning permission and contrary to the LPA's decision until December of twenty sixteen. Their presence only became malign, if at all, in late twenty sixteen, not in twenty eleven. In my submission, that doesn't betray any misunderstanding whatsoever of the scope of the condition. And so far as paragraph seventy-one is concerned, where the judge indicated that the marquees should not be there unless permitted to remain under a fresh unlawfully granted planning permission and in accordance with the terms of that planning permission, then that in my submission is effectively a statement of the law because Mr. Lockhart Mumry relied in particular on an application under section seventy-three of the Town and Country Planning Act. And he said that an application could have been made to continue with the marquees without complying with that permission. Well, that would be a fresh planning permission. The Lord, Lord Justice Limbong, will appreciate that. Alternatively, there could have been a standalone, as it were, fresh planning application, not under section seventy-three. So my submission is that there is nothing to substantiate the complaint that Mr. Lockhart Mumry makes about the judge misunderstanding the scope of the permission and the condition that should have formed condition one of the, of the planning permission. Next, I think it's incumbent on me to say something about the council's knowledge of the error. And I think I have to be frank in relation to that, and in relation to that, if one treats the council as a corporate entity, then I suppose it could be said that it was known at the outset that there was an error. Now, it may well be that one person in the council didn't really appreciate that, but another person did. If the knowledge had been combined, then yes, as a corporate entity, the council may be said to have been aware of it. The knowledge was located in the council as a body, I suppose it could be said. Realistically, I think the position comes down to what happened a little bit later on in May twenty twelve. And I have to accept, and the council, I think, has always accepted during the course of these proceedings, that what it did then was ineffective. And I think I also have to accept that in practical terms, its effect was as described by each of my learned friends, because once the December decision notice was no longer on the website and there was simply the backdated November twenty eleven decision notice, then anyone who looked at the website from that period on would not have had any inkling that there was some issue. A person who had looked at it before then and looked at it after then might have seen the difference in the website, but a person who looked before, a person who didn't look before and only looked at some point after after May twenty twelve would simply have seen what was on the website. And while suppress is a word that carries connotations that perhaps are rather derogatory, I don't see why I should seek to substitute a different word. The effect, I have to accept, of what was done was to prevent, perhaps that's a more neutral word, from that point onwards, anyone detecting that there was an error. What I would resist, because the, the evidence doesn't take us there, is that there was an intention to suppress. We know what.
I don't know if this is going to get us very far, is it actually really credible that when the decision had to be made in May two thousand and twelve, as to what notice to put up, nobody actually looked to see what the planning permission was having been granted? Is that really credible?
Well, I, I accept the council should have, the council should have, the council itself should have, should have.
The point was to decide which of these should be, should be remained. So the question is, are we going to find out what the planning permission is?
Yes. Yes, I mean, that, that, there should have been further investigation at that point. I, I don't think I can really.
Not showing your sisters very much, here, but I mean, there we are.
But, I mean, that's. That, 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 that's a failure. I have to accept that, but I'm not accepting that there was an intention to suppress. That's, that, that's the point I'm making there.
Just one further point on this. Did you accept it was also a failure not to alert both the applicant and the objector?
Yes, I think I, I think I have to accept, I think I have to accept that a planning authority, realizing that something was amiss at that stage, should have done, should have, should have done something more than it did. I don't think I can realistically gain say, gain say that.
Mr. Evans, do you differ from Mr. Strong's submission as to the original letter being beyond the powers of an officer, given the nature of the resolution?
Absolutely, yes.
You accept what he says?
Oh, yes, yes, it was, it was, it was entirely unauthorized. As I say, I, 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 I adopt Mr. Strong's submission. I would submit that there's no question about that. I didn't actually understand that to be a ground of appeal before this court in terms of the substantive position. It rather turned into a ground of appeal in Malonied Friend's submission. But the way the matter is put is that it's a matter that's relevant to discretion. That's the way it's put in the skeleton argument, rather than seeking to say that there was a, that there wasn't a substantive error. But the council has always been absolutely clear that this was a planning permission issued without authorization.
And what about the putting out of the November document? That was both unlawful because it was altering the planning register in an inaccurate way.
It, yes, it did alter the planning register.
In an inaccurate way.
In an inaccurate way.
And was that authorized or not?
No, that wasn't.
So it's both unlawful and unauthorized.
Yes, I think I have, I think I have to, I think I have to accept. As I say, my, my, my submission was mainly designed to hope that your lordships would accept that it wasn't with, it wasn't with an intention to suppress. It was, it was unlawful, it was misgoing. The next point, the next point that I wanted to address, in a sense, follows on from that. And that is that the chronology doesn't stop at that point. Because of course, Mr. Strong had submitted, once those actions had taken place, then the actions of the developer thereafter gave the impression to the council that the developer too was acting on the basis that the November document was in fact the correct planning permission. And whilst that, whilst that doesn't excuse what the council did, then of course it's relevant to Malonied Friend, Mr. Strong, Mr. Strong's case. Could I just next say a very brief word in relation to the topic of revocation that was discussed this morning? I think at one point, the court was proceeding on the basis that the planning permission could have been revoked at any point before it was quashed. I don't, with respect, think that's quite correct. Yes, we've got section ninety-seven of the Town and Country Planning Act in the, in the authorities bundle. Your lordships, just give me a moment to turn it up.
Twenty-five.
Subsection ninety-seven, one conveys the power. Subsection three indicates that the power may be exercised in the case of planning permission that relates to the carrying out of buildings or other operations at any time before those operations have been completed. So once the operations in terms of the permanent erection of the marquees were completed, then that power would no longer have been available. I think it's probably a point of detail because there may have been a power under section one oh two to require the removal of buildings, also bringing in train with it a compensation liability.
So if it's not ninety-seven, it's one oh two?
If it's not ninety-seven, I think it would probably be one oh two. I think that's a point, a point of detail, I thought it was worth referring to that.
So it could have been revoked?
It could have been, it could have been revoked at any time before the, it could have been revoked at any time before the marquees were permanently.
Or otherwise, section one oh two.
Otherwise, section one oh two would have been the requisite. And the only other topic.
Sorry, Mr. Evans, again to break in. I take it that there never was a decision not to revoke?
No, there wasn't, no.
There's no evidence that there was, but is it implicit in anything that happened that somebody thought? that somebody thought about revocation and decided, no, we can simply write the other letter?
I, I, I'm not even, the evidence doesn't go there. I think, I think the position is largely as my Lord, Lord Justice Limblon said, that the facts are largely lost in the mists of time and the so-called Mayor Culpa report goes as far as it can. So I can't say that a decision was taken. We're not going to revoke. But we'll put another, we'll put another document on the website. It's impossible to infer that.
Yes.
The only, the only other point I wanted to, to deal with was just to draw your lordship's attention to one or two passages from the case law, if I may, in relation to some of the-
I just think that, it's not how Mummy's got very little time now to reply. How long are you going to be?
I'm going to be not more than five minutes. Gerber tab 2, paragraph 49 is one of the paragraphs that your lordships have been referred to. The only point I wanted to make in relation to paragraph 49 is that one of the rationales for the strict time limits set forth by Lord Justice Sale is that extending time so that a legal objection could be mounted by someone who happened to remain unaware of what was going on until many months later would unfairly prejudice the interests of a developer who wishes to rely upon a planning permission which appears to have been lawfully granted. And I simply wanted to highlight that the appearance to the person who seeks to rely on the planning permission of what it was that he had in his hands is a relevant matter that underpins the rationale for the time limits. And I adopt in their entirety my learned friend, Mr Strong's submissions in relation to the developer's knowledge of the fact that what was in his hands was in error and all the consequence submissions following on from that. Next, I just wanted to make a very brief point in relation to the issue of prejudice and how prejudice should be, should be attacked, should, should, should be approached in circumstances where a developer understands that his permission may be at risk. This is Holder, tab 4, in Court of Appeal. And I simply give your lordships the reference to paragraphs 30 and 31. And in particular, paragraph 31, where the court took a cheery attitude to the developer's claims of reliance when the developer must have appreciated the risks. And I, I say that's pertinent in this case. And finally, I just wanted to deal with a very short point which I think relates more to Mr Strong's case than anything I might say, but I draw it to the court's attention. And it concerns the issue that the court was concerned about at one stage in the hearing. And that was, who was present at the original committee meeting in September 2011? And what the, what the, what the interested party, the first respondent, did thereafter in terms of monitoring the planning commission? A similar issue arose in the case of Gavin. This is tab 8. And the matter was dealt with by Mr Justice Richards, I think it was, as, as he then was. And could I give your lordships the paragraph references? 68 and 69. 68 and 69. This was in the context of a submission that a person should have, with professional advice and a substantial business, should have checked that certain things that were expected to be done by the planning authorities have been done. And paragraph 69 in particular deals with the issue that my learned, my learned friend, Mr Strong, was dealing with as a matter of principle about not being under an obligation to monitor the lawfulness of what a planning authority was doing. And Mr Justice Richards rejected any argument that there should be such a duty whereby a person was required to, to, to monitor what a planning authority was doing. And the gist of, the gist of it was that local authorities should be, they, they should be the persons who discharge their responsibilities rather have their actions checked by others. I've attempted to be-
You've been very, you've been very efficient, thank you very much.
Because economically, that-
You have, you have a great girlfriend too. Mr, my mum, sorry, you've been screwed.
My lord, I've got about six or seven points. I'll deal with them as shortly as I can. My lord, I take this point first because it was canvas lightly first by Mr Strong and then dealt with at greater length than I'll deal with it now. And, and that is that I didn't draw the court's attention to the application for approval of details that was made in March 2013. The, the, the actual reason was that I skipped an entire page in my notes in, in seeking to meet the timing of it. But that's not a proper reason. I need to go to that matter, my lord. And can I first deal with the, deal with this point via reference to the judgment? Paragraph 18. On 13 March 2013, a different agent of the interested party, Mr Doughty, applied to discharge the conditions relating to various matters basing himself on the position as he understood it to be, as at 11 November 2011, the date of the section 106 agreement and the date attributed to the notice then on the LPA's website. So, my lord, that, that is, with respect, correct. SDA are architects, they weren't the planning agent. They were simply instructed to discharge conditions and they looked at the website. And as my learned friend, Mr Strong, said at one stage, and I quote him, "Anyone would be clear" that that, that's to say in November 11, that that was the operative planning permission. Go to the website, that's what you'd see. That's what Mr Doughty of SDA did. And likewise, the same point goes to the point on tab 18, which was a planning permission from extension to the marquees, which again was Mr Doughty of SDA acting on the same assumption. So it is not correct, and my learned friend made great play of this, it is not correct to submit that we were blowing hot and cold effectively and that we were ourselves relying on a bogus document. In the real world, this is what happens. And the new agent is instructed to carry out some technical function. He doesn't consult the planning history, doesn't talk to Mr Landall. He checks the website, sees the planning permission dated November 11, and he acts accordingly. So, my lord, that is that first point. Second, my lord, there was much submission about the earlier planning history. That is to say, 2006, 2007, and so forth. Now, my lord, a number of applications were made by my clients in relation to those developments, but I'm not going to go there. The court will not profit by dealing with matters that are quite extraneous to the issue. What is, I accept, not extraneous to the issue is that the Lakeside Marquee was, as I said at the outset, erected prior to the grant of the planning permission. Only the Lakeside. But I accept that point to that extent. My lord, next, the intended condition one. My Lord, Lord Justice Limblon said at a later stage of argument, "Condition one doesn't positively require removal, but after five years, it, it would be liable to enforcement action", as if I, as if that was a shift in the position from what I had submitted. It wasn't, my lord, it, it wasn't such with respect. I mean, I, I think that that's what I submitted at, at the outset.
I think that's Limble.
Yes, yes.
So what are you saying about this? On, 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 and we didn't edition one, you're accepting?
My lord, it doesn't, it didn't, it never contained the requirement to, to, to remove. I accept that had the permission been granted in that form and had five years passed and had the marquees or any of them remained, they would then have become liable to enforcement actions as being either development without planning permission or, I think not, development in breach of the condition because there was no condition requiring removal. But I accept it would have been open to enforcement action. And then if that enforcement action had been confirmed, the penalties would, would follow. My lord, next, and an important point. In my submission, and it's a matter for the court now to judge in the round. In my submission, the first respondent has failed to explain why it didn't check the register. It was professionally advised. It's a significant commercial company. It made objections throughout the process as has been referred to. Indeed, Mr Gilbert was instructed to make a request for call-in after the resolution. And I would add, my lord, that as has been rightly said, 14 months elapsed from the resolution to the, through to the execution of the 106 and the grant of the planning permission, in fact, about a month later. All the more reason for anyone to check the register, to check what decision was issued. And really, there's been, apart from saying, well, it's all a bit difficult. Is one supposed to search the website until a planning permission emerges? It is the work of two minutes carried out, say, every month to check a website, check the planning register.
What about, what about Mr Evans' point about the statement of Lord Justice, of Mr Justice Stephen Richards saying that people are entitled to assume that the council's carrying out its functions properly?
Well, my lord, that, that was in a case, I'll be corrected if I'm wrong because it's two, two days or so since I read Holder. Holder was a case where-
Gavin.
I think it's- Gavin.
It's Gavin.
Gavin, I think, was a case-
The one with the case, there's tab nine.
Tab eight.
Tab nine is literally-
No, tab, tab eight is a-
Tab eight.
Paragraph 68 and 69.
68 and 69, yeah.
My lord, that is, and I'll be corrected if I'm wrong because, as I said a moment since I looked at this, that was alleged errors arising in the course of a planning application process. And it was said by his lordship that effectively a third party can rely on the planning authority to deal with a matter according to statute requirements and policy and so forth. Our case, of course, is concerned, is concerned with the issue of the grant of a planning permission after the application process has, has come to an end. My lord, I think, I think that this case was a criticism about conduct, as I say, in the course of a planning application, whether regard was being had to the right matters and, and so forth, and whether-
So you say it doesn't go, go to the principle that the interested parties should check the website after the event?
It doesn't go to, in, in my submission, that what was grappled with by Lord Justice Sales in Gerber, that's to say that people who are concerned about what's happening in their area should monitor the council's register to see whether a planning permission has been granted. That was, that was the the failing by Mr Gerber in that case.
There's another point that I perhaps I should have asked about this. Mr Gilbert's evidence was that he was instructed about calling in. Maybe he was instructed to call in the- What if we have the timing?
I'm sorry, I haven't answered the question, so sorry.
I think Mr Gilbert had made some evidence about trying to get the matter called in. I don't think there's a date that's given.
Because he, I think the passage my lord has in mind is tab 28, Mr Gerber's second witness statement, page 185.
That's right.
And paragraph five. "Once the resolution had been passed and our subsequent representation of the government office had been unsuccessful, there was no reason for me to be further involved. I had no cloud instructions to be involved further. Whether I agreed with the resolution or not, it was going through a process that I could not influence or even monitor." Well, that's nonsense with respect. Of course he could monitor it.
Well, he, he may be saying that once, once he'd unsuccessfully sought call in, then without instruction, so in the aftermath of that, he wasn't to be expected to be doing it. To be fair to him, when, when was the rejection of calling?
I don't know.
And why would it be expected that to be within a month or so after September the 10th?
My lord, I, I don't, I don't know. Your lordship would be aware that there's a limited time for the Secretary of State then to decide-
There was 28 days.
28 days, so it would be shortly after the committee. I don't have a precise one. But it would have been shortly after that committee.
I mean, he doesn't, it is, I think my lord's right because it must be that he simply didn't have, he had no instructions involved. He goes over the page to say, "I had no cloud instructions to monitor the council website or to check it over a year after the resolution is made to establish whether the planning permission had been granted before the resolution was made."
to establish whether the planning permission had been granted before the resolution, such as so, it is not often a paid for complaint.
Well, my lord, that's, that's, that's a decision that the first respondent made.
Can I just insist you with the date, the call, the call-in decision from the council website is twenty-third of September two thousand and ten? Ie. that's when the Secretary of State...
No, that's wrong, I'm just trying to...
Twenty-third of which month?
I apologize, my lord.
Oh.
So, sorry.
All right. So what was the twenty-third of September? You said something about twenty-third of September?
Yes, but I'm, I'm... Oh, that's the wrong day.
No, that's right, that's right. Twenty-seventh of September two thousand and ten. Twenty-third of September two thousand and ten was the date that the Secretary of State decided not to call in the application. So the, Mr. Gilbert's, Gilbert's instruction related to the date, period before that.
Thank you very much, yes. So I think that was your point four. And, and my lord, I've truncated the points because I dealt with some of them together. Let me just check if I may. Yes, the, the, the only other point I, I'd seek to add is that my learned friend, Mr. Strawn, has trodden lightly, I think it's fair to say, over the prejudice aspects. But I would just, as I did in opening, remind the court of tab thirty.
You gave us some passages there.
I gave you passages of paragraph three and four, which I, again, urge the court to read in, in the round of the evidence. And I, I tie that in, my lord, with the speaking note that I handed in and the way in which prejudice was and wasn't dealt with by the learned judge at all. My lord, I think, would you give me literally, of course, thirty seconds to check?
My lord, whilst my learned friend is doing that, can I just raise one factual point specifically? I wasn't present at the hearing below, but I think the court should be aware there were no submissions made seeking to resist the extension of time on the basis of revocation or discontinuance to the learned judge, as I instructed. I don't see them in the, either in the judgment or the skeleton arguments. I think your lordship asked a question about the judge not dealing with them, English judge, dealing with that principle. But it wasn't an issue raised before. If I'm, if I'm wrong about that, I'll be correct, but I think that's a factual position.
But I think, am I wrong in thinking that, that revocation was raised in the skeleton argument here? Mr. Lockhart, you raised the question of revocation, my lord. I didn't, did I?
You did.
I did.
You did.
Well, I'm replying very briefly to my, instantly to my lord's question, I better...
Yes, true.
Be absolutely clear about that. I think I jumped too quickly, my lord, I don't, I don't see it there immediately.
Somebody decided to put section ninety-seven in the authority's book, remove that.
Yes. Uh, that was, that was, that was our... My lord, I think I, I, I think I answered too quickly, I apologize. I'm surprised with the, with the law. I seem to remember, I, I looked at Mr. Evans. I seem to remember that section ninety-seven was debated at the hearing because I think, indeed, I'm pretty certain that Mr. Evans made precisely the same point that he has on section ninety-seven, three A, in Manchester a year ago. I, I'm, I'm sure you did.
Well, Mr. Lockhart, Mummy's got a better memory than I, I really can't, I can't remember. I'm not saying I didn't, I simply can't remember.
Yes, I remember that. It was... Yes, it was canvassed before the judge because my instructing sister remembers encouraging me to do so.
Very well, anything else?
No, thank you.
We're extremely grateful to all county in this case for the very helpful and, and the arguments. We will consider our judgment in this matter. When we distribute the judgment draft, please agree a form of order. We don't wish to have any further submissions in, or only unless we say so. Thank you.